Welcome, everyone. We'll get started. Today is Tuesday, June 20th, as yesterday was a holiday. Welcome to the regular meeting of the San Rafael City Council. I'll request the city clerk to call the roll.
Councilmember Bushy.
President.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Vice Mayor Adam Scalotti.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here this evening. Thank you. We had a closed session earlier. I'm going to invite the city attorney to report out.
Thank you. Good evening. No reportable action was taken in closed session.
Okay, fantastic. So, welcome. We're glad you're here, either in the chambers or watching virtually. We are in a hybrid format. And we always want to start the meeting thanking staff because it is because of their efforts day in and day out that keeps our city running so well. So, thank you to the staff that are here, the ones that are listening, and the ones that do incredible work every single day. So, if this is your first meeting, you might not know that we often do a land acknowledgement as part of our opening to our meeting. And I just want to take a brief moment and talk about why, because there's been curiosity expressed, "Why do we do that?" It's the same reason that we do things like raise the pride flag, which we did two weeks ago, or include proclamations on our agenda, which you'll see there some this evening. And these are very simple actions that we take during the council meeting to really affirm the city's ongoing commitment to those four policy areas or to our bigger policy areas. These council meeting actions are very tiny when compared to the actual work around those areas, be it work of inclusion or acknowledgement or more concrete actions, for example, building affordable housing or creating resilience around sea level rise. And of course, the actual work takes months and years and builds upon itself. The majority of the actual work occurs outside of the council meeting. We set policy here, we receive input, and a lot of the work and a lot of the community works happens the other six days of the week. The actual work also includes the broadest community members, a broadest group, a broad group of community members who are interested in collaboration and change, in addition to those who are able to either come to the meeting or to listen in. The actual work requires sustained effort over time and in spite of frustrations or disagreements, because we're going to have them, that's the nature of humans, means that people who are interested in being change agents keep showing up. So, if you want to be a change agent and you want to learn more about the different issues that the city is working on, I encourage you to subscribe to the Snapshot, which is our bi-monthly newsletter that the city manager puts out. And it really talks about all this other work going on outside the council and how you can participate as you would see fit to do. So, now turning to the land acknowledgement, which was the start of the statement. "I'm deeply grateful that these words have been provided by the Federated Indians of the Great Rancheria." And outside of me reading this statement, there is a partnership that continues with the tribe to take action on the issues that are important to them. So, "We acknowledge that the present-day city of San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Mewoc people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria. We thank the original caretakers of this land and honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all." I will now turn to the city clerk. He'll describe how people can participate in tonight's evening.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. The meeting tonight is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube, and members of the public can provide comment by phone by calling 669-444-9171. And they can use the meeting ID 86061905675 pound and press the star nine, star nine to raise their hand for comment, or they can watch directly through Zoom and using the link on the agenda, and they can use the raise hander, the raise hand feature on Zoom as well. If you experience any technical difficulties, you can contact me at city.clerk@cityofsanarfel.org. Displayed on the podium in the projector is a two-minute timer to help you stay within the two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though you're not required, to introduce yourself and say what part of San Rafael you live in, or if you're from outside of San Rafael. We are offering closed captioning for this evening's meeting on Zoom, and you can select the live transcript button on Zoom to enable this feature. Thank you.
Thank you so much. So, it's open time for public expression. I have a couple cards that I'll read, and it's okay if you haven't filled out a card. You can still give public input, but I will start with folks in the room and with the cards. And I'll start with Mr. Larry Andow. Welcome.
Actually, this is too short because...
Hold on. I can't tell. It doesn't sound like...
There we go.
Okay. Okay, go ahead.
All right. So, this is going to be short because between the time I filled out the card for Lindsay and right now, Craig has shown up from Parks and Rec, and that's why I'm here, because I'm here to talk about Peacock Gap Park and getting some community input into that. Craig will take care of that for me. So, my, my thoughts here are not necessary to present to council. So, if that's okay, I'm just going to go talk to staff.
Thank you. And we're glad that Craig is here, and you can always email us in case there's follow-up items.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay. Tylee Holden?
Hi. Thanks for having me back again. We, since the last time I was here, talking about Dominican Valley and the development, three different project plans have been submitted, ranging from 31 homes to 81 homes in the 28-acre parcel. I did some, some math on this that most concerns me on the infrastructure, and one is the, the road directly out of my driveway on Deer Park Avenue. And its most narrow point, it's 12 feet. In the average car with, without counting mirrors, is five feet, eight inches wide. So, that would give a clearance of eight inches. And this is an area where we have now plans for 110 extra cars that would be going in and out of there regularly to get to the grocery store, various local schools. Just to sort of add a more human aspect to this, when there was a fire last year, my, my family was the only family that was asked to evacuate, and the firemen actually asked to use our driveway because there wasn't any room on the road. And to get out of our driveway, they had to ask other cars to clear because people were coming up the road and down the road, and you can't do that actually at the same time in multiples. So, I just hope that this is something that we could have a discussion about, continue talking. There are plans now, so it looks like things are moving, and we want to make sure that we really look at those infrastructure issues, so any development plans are done safely. And I also represent 108 homeowners in the area as well. We have decided to unite to discuss infrastructure issues in our area. Great. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments. Chris Catchpot? Catchpool?
Good evening, and thank you for your time. I've been on that hill and summit where this development is being proposed, the Dominican properties, for almost 60 years, coming up on it. And during my time there, I've experienced a lot of fires. There've been a lot of fires in that area. Fortunately, none have gotten out of control. But this proposed development sounds to me like a fire trap, honestly. Is San Rafael going to develop their own coffee lane? There is one way in, in, one way out. It's not sustainable to put in all these homes up there, and there's no plans, there's no way to mitigate the fire hazard. I'm very concerned about that. Secondly, I worked in the Oakland Hills. I'm a contractor during those years. And I can tell you, the residents who stayed, whose homes didn't burn down, it was a pity because they all left because it's impossible to live through a construction zone like that. This development is huge. It's not sustainable in our area, and I think it's a really mistake that should be considered. But I'll go back to the fire issue. That is something that really needs to be considered. If you look over the history, the hill where the homes are on Deer Park before has burnt down twice in my lifetime. So, and now there's a bunch of homes there. So, I'm just going to let you know. I think it's a mistake. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? So, again, if you don't have a card, not a problem. You can come on down. Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Hi. My name is JP Guitard. I live at 307 Highland Avenue. I was also here a couple of weeks ago when there was no project, and now there's a project before you. So, I hope you will, please, give some attention to our concerns. I've briefly looked at the plans. They range from, I don't know, at 36 or 40 houses to 75 units. Includes near the intersection of Margarita and Highland, yeah, Margarita and Highland, where I live. It includes, I think, six townhomes. And right now, that street, I measured Margarita for coming up here. It's 12 feet wide, 12 feet, six inches wide. You cannot get two cars, barely get two cars. I drive up there all the time, walk there all the time. When a car comes down, I have to step off onto the dirt on the side to let the car by. So, I don't see how in the world this project makes any sense and how it's going to be developed safely, how you'll get emergency vehicles up there, fire rescue. You cannot get a fire truck up there if there's a car on the road, not even on Highland. Two cars can barely pass on Highland. So, I hope you, please, please, take all of this into consideration. That area cannot, the infrastructure, that area cannot sustain a development of the size that's being proposed, not only up on Highland and Margarita, but also down below. At the, when I briefly looked at the map, most of the density is concentrated at the bottom of the parcel, right across from the Santa Sabina Center and along Deer Park. Deer Park cannot handle any traffic, and that traffic's not only going to go up Deer Park and it's going to go down Summit, it's going to go down Jewel. It's going to greatly increase. If you look at 75 homes, you're talking 150 trip, 150 cars. And if you're talking four trips a day or three trips a day, you're looking at a huge amount of traffic on those streets. They can't bear it. So, that's just one of the issues. We look forward to meeting you and talking with you again, I'm sure, on this issue.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else in the chambers would like to comment? Thank you, Ben. I've been looking at the TV. Yeah. Go ahead.
Mayor Collin, and also distinguished members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to be here and speak on behalf of the community that lives in there and is there every day. As I mentioned to you before, my mother's 105 and built her house there. She still lives in her house. I still care for her every day on that property. I'm on that street every single day. Today, there is a sewer reconstruction going on for the last week and a half, and it's continuing. They have signs up saying, "Single-lane road in both directions," and you have to stop and allow people to go through. I have a photograph that I took of eight people walking with their dogs at 5:00 o'clock last week. This is a very, very strong community. It's the gem for me, for the city of San Rafael, that you will not be able to replace if you lose this opportunity, and we think seven generations out. The children, the community, the dogs, the sense of community that it brings together for all of the city of San Rafael, you cannot replace this. There is no place else to go to have this. Please consider this from the bottoms of your hearts. Realize that if you lose this location, you will not recover another one. There is never going to be another one of these locations for the community. From the Canal District that comes through, I've talked to so many people that are not from this area that come, and they say, "This is the best place for us to be, to ride, to bike, to gather, to commune, and to share, you know, our dogs and our walking." Please do not lose this gem of the city of San Rafael. It's the crown jewel in the city of San Rafael, as far as I'm concerned. Let's think seven generations out. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Any other public comment on items not on tonight's agenda? Okay, not seeing anyone in the chambers. Is there anyone virtually?
I see no hands raised. We'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment. And because it's not on the agenda, we can't talk about it. But I will ask the city manager just to talk about the public process, because I know that if you haven't gone through it before, it can be a little bit confusing. So, maybe you can speak to how it happens and maybe timeframe? I know that's kind of hard, but that would be helpful.
Sure. So, the public process for these projects, there are three pre-applications that have been submitted with the Community Development Department. The planners are reviewing, and they have a number of questions. They're pre-applications at this point. So, then it would go to an application stage if the developer move forward with that. And then the process, the timeline is difficult depending upon what the proposal is and the analysis and evaluation with the planner and the back and forth and those conversations. Ultimately, if the project moved forward, then it would go to the Design Review Board for consideration and then to the Planning Commission. So, it's when we're happy to take public comment about this project and the concerns from the community, it is not currently in a process that's before the city council for consideration. I think that's what we're wanting to clarify, that there's many months of, of public process and engagement through those other public forums that will happen before a project would potentially come to the city council for consideration.
And that's helpful. And if interested residents want to know when it's coming, when it starts going through the process, past the pre-application, how can they be notified?
I'm going to have Director Judas C. come in.
Thank you, Director Judas. And again, it's not on the agenda, so I don't want to get too deep into it. But again, just trying to talk about the process and how people can know.
Good evening. Allye Judas C., Community Development Director. So, the public process will be, as city manager, a little bit just mentioned, there's, there's going to be a pre-application, then there's an actual application, a formal application submitted. The public can get involved at any time by submitting letters to the staff before the project, a formal project actually goes to the Design Review Board and the Planning Commission. The city will provide notification to neighborhood, to the neighbors within 300 feet. In addition, we're really encouraging the applicant to reach out to the neighbors and keep them just remain in communication with them and so that they're aware of what's happening and what stage the project is at and that they are able to provide input to the applicant, because that's really right, the right path right now. It's in its early stages. Receiving information from the neighborhood is really going to be important as he proceeds with the, with the application process.
That's helpful. And will there be one of those boards that are like in front of the...
Yes.
And Allye, real quick, who's the, who would they email questions or comments to and stuff?
They can email, right now, you can email questions to, I'm thinking about what the right email address.
It can always go to the city clerk.
Yeah, that would probably be the best.
And then she would forward it as appropriate.
CityofSanRafel.org. I, the other person is Jeff Ballentine, jeff.ballentine@cityofSanRafel.org. But I can spell his last name, B-A-L-L-E-N-T-I-N-E. So, hopefully, that gets through. But the, the best place would be to start with the city clerk, and she can forward that to our, our planner.
Thank you, Director Judas C. Thank you. Okay, so, we're going to move on to city manager and council member reports. So, I will turn to the city manager for her report.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Happy to report that Sun Valley Park is reopened last week, which is very exciting. There will be a celebration and ribbon-cutting ceremony on Wednesday, July the 12th, at 3:30 PM. So, all the public are welcome. There'll be some refreshments and a lot of happy kids on the new playground equipment. At the last city council meeting, the Police Advisory and Accountability Committee was established, and I just wanted to give you an update. The staff are now working on a community engagement plan to get the word out, to make sure everyone in the community has the opportunity to serve and apply to be on that committee. The applications will be available online on June 30th. And we've created a form or a button on our policing in San Rafael website that allows you to ask questions or express early interest. So, if you go to cityofSanRafel.org/pacinterest, you can, you know, share any questions or interest now, and that's where the application will be posted. There's also another opportunity to participate in an exciting project, which is a sea level rise adaptation planning project, which is being led by our own Kate Hageman, the city's climate adaptation and resilience planner. They are, it's a project that's focused on central and east San Rafael. It's a collaboration with the city, Multicultural Center of Marin, Canal Alliance, University of California, Berkeley College of Environmental Design. The project is funded with, through a state grant, so there's $644,000 from the State Office of Planning and Development. The project team is looking for applicants for a steering committee. So, it's a great opportunity to participate in that planning process. Preferences given to renters and homeowners and businesses who are at the greatest risk from rising seas and maritime flooding to apply for that committee, which I think is closing in a couple of days, June 23rd. You can go to multiculturalmarin.org/steering-committee. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. I'll turn to my colleagues for their report out of meetings that they've attended. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. So, on June 9th, we attended the groundbreaking celebration for 3301 Kerner for our special needs community, and Mayor Kate and Councilmember Kurtz were there as well, in addition to other elected officials. And I think the most exciting thing is about the fact that they are transforming an office building into housing, which I think has the potential to start being replicated. And I know in San Francisco, they've been trying to do it for a while, and here we are in San Rafael starting doing that. So, that was really exciting. And then on June 12th, I attended a meeting with Boces del Canal in, in the canal, with Chief Spiller and also with our city manager. And it was a really great meeting about policing, and they had a presentation of many ideas of how we can improve our relationship with the police in the community. And so, always really excited to meet them. They are great leaders, and it's great to hear from everybody in our community. That's what we are trying to do. So, that's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
Along with the, the mayor, I attended the meeting of the San Rafael Sanitation District Board. It was a very significant meeting. We adopted a budget for the next two fiscal years. And in those budgets, we made significant increases in our capital expenditures, like doubling the amount of capital expenditures that are occurring. We've been lagging behind in the last couple of years, primarily due to an inability to hire staff. In order to facilitate this increase in capital expenditures, we, our staff brought forward a contract with a consulting firm that was providing services at very reasonable rates. But nevertheless, we're almost, almost a million dollars for a year. But that will enable us to move forward with these very needed projects in the community. So, we voted unanimously to adopt that, that two-year budget and move forward with those projects.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
Thank you. I attended the Los Calinas Sanitary District ribbon-cutting, which wasn't really a ribbon. It was the ceremonial flushing of a toilet. Seemed appropriate for the sanitary district, so. But it was a great event and a huge project to expand their capabilities. Our MCCMC Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members Homeless Committee. We are continuing to meet and are, we have Director Gary Nahaja-Rice from the county attending and really providing a number of, for the council members, sort of a 101 of homeless services, questions, all sorts of things. So, that's been really helpful. Attended the Juneteenth celebration in Marin City. And like to thank Public Works for getting the Terra Linda Splash, Splash Pad, I think we call it, up on Montecito. So, thank you. It's up and running.
At the park. At the park. Yes. Fantastic. Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Mayor Kate, I have three meetings to report out. On Thursday, June 8th, I attended the Economic Development Subcommittee with Mayor Kate, as well as led by Director Micah Hinkel and other folks that attend the meeting. There was the examination of the evolution of the street area program as it continues to unfold as we come out of the pandemic. The Economic Development Strategic Plan, which was passed in May, is moving forward into implementation. And there were comments made about the Specialized Assistance for Everyone Safe Program that is becoming more and more aware, the community is becoming more aware of the, of the program and using it effectively. The second meeting I attended was on Monday, June 12th, with the AdHoc Green Microgrid Policymakers Committee. It's a committee part of MCCMC, the Marin County Council of Mayors and Council Members. We talked about the Fairfax Pavilion Project, as well as the Sausalito example of decarbonization and resilience. And then finally, on Friday, June 16th, I represented the city at the Association of Bay Area Governments, A-BAG General Assembly, which happens once a year. The major item that was reviewed in the General Assembly was the budget for A-BAG. The main punchline there is that they have had some structural deficits due to pension liability. They are examining sale of their portion of the... They are examining sale of their portion of the building at 385 Beal to help make that up. They don't know what the value is because it was pre-pandemic. And so that was an item that is being examined closely. And that is my report for this past two weeks.
Thank you. The nice thing about going last is it's already been reported, many of the meetings that I attended, there was one that none of you got to go to, and it was the Transportation of Thordia Marin Administration and Project Committee meeting. It's open to the public. You could always call in. And actually, they, we had a single item. We talked about the North-South Greenway and the Cross Marin Bike Way. So those are all the bike paths and bike routes that are in Marin County. And believe it or not, until Tam did this report, there wasn't one place where you could go and see all the completed segments and all the segments that need to be completed and the ones that were the different tiers of bikeways. So so it's a great report, really actually super, super interesting. And it'll be used to really help us prioritize and complete gaps going forward. So we spent a lot of time on that. So with that, thank you as usual for all the work that you do between the meetings. And I will take public comment on the City Manager and Councilmember reports. Anyone in the chambers like to comment on this report? Not seeing anyone in the chambers. Is there anyone online?
I do see one hand raised.
Thank you.
Hi there. I was listening to all your reports, and I think I heard Mary Beth say that we got a lot of money for something for much-needed projects, but I didn't hear what the projects were, or was I just not paying attention? Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll clarify, the money was, it was for the San Rafael Sanitation District report out. She was talking about their capital improvement project.
I see no other hands raised, so I'll give everyone a moment. I see no further public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items that colleagues would like to hold from the consent agenda? Not seeing any. I will open public comment, and our consent agenda has items for A through I. Any comments on the consent agenda? Not seeing anyone in the chambers. Anyone online like to comment on the consent agenda?
I see no hands raised, but I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comment and request motion on the agenda.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second, moved and seconded roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Dan Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. Always love it when we have a special presentation. And before we get to the special presentation, we do retake public comment. So if there's anyone in the chambers, and tonight it is proclamation appreciating Larry Paul, retired Design Review Board member, among other roles that you've played. So is there any public comment in the chambers on this item? Not seeing anyone, anyone virtually?
I see no hands raised, and I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. We'll close the public comment, but now we're all going to come down and have the proclamation Mr. Paul, would you come on up? Hi. So the proclamation, as you know, has lots of whereas's, and we get to brag about you. I do notice it doesn't say anything about your incredible flair when it comes to the shirts that you wear. So I will just mention that. The Hawaiian prints were always, we knew that you were in the house, some of that happened. Okay, so I will start. Whereas Larry Paul, with his role with the City of San Rafael, San Rafael Design Review Board, you started in July 1990, and you served for 22 years until June of 2002, during which you served as Chair numerous times. But no, you weren't done yet. In July 2002, you were appointed to the San Rafael Planning Commission, where you served for 16 years until 2018, during which you served as Chair numerous times. And in July 2018, you were reappointed to the Design Review Board, where you served four more years, from 2018 to June 2022, during which you served as Chair in 2022. So you have spent many years in this chamber helping us to guide policy. Whereas Larry, you were always respectful of design professionals and carefully considered their rationale for a design. You always made constructive suggestions to improve the design whilst being conscious of the designer's choice and the cost to the applicant. And during your tenure on both the DRB and the Planning Commission, you reviewed many, many important community projects. We're not going to list them all, because that would be another five minutes, but the big ones include the village at Locklomen Marina, the renovation starting at Northgate Mall, Oakmont Senior Living Facility, BioMarin, and the list goes on. Whereas Larry was a major community stakeholder and participant in the Vision North San Rafael 1990s and served as Chair of the Community-Based Steering Committee. Whereas Larry was known for his passion for palm trees, and for those that can't see up close, he does have palm trees on his shirt. Yeah, it was captured. We knew that about you. And it was a signature for development projects, with a prime example being the ones at the BioMarin Plaza. Now, every time we drive by, we'll say, Larry was here. And whereas Larry contributed numerous volunteer hours over three decades for the betterment of the city and dedicated his architectural background and expertise to comment on proposed projects with the goal of achieving a high aesthetic for the city's built environment. And I have to say, in all those years, your words of wisdoms really resonate with the community. And having sat next to you on the Planning Commission, and I'm sure Councilwoman Bushy would say the same thing, that we always appreciated your input and your insight to make the projects better and to have them really represent what the community wanted. So therefore, I, Kate Collin, Mayor, on behalf of the city and my colleagues, do hereby proclaim our sincere appreciation to Larry Paul for his many important contributions and community service to the City of San Rafael. Please join me in a round of applause. And we would love to hear from you. We know he's not shy, but we would love to hear from you.
Well, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, the City Council, and thank you to the whole community for, it's been a great honor to serve the city and the community all these years. And I do take pleasure in seeing a lot of the projects that that we reviewed actually got built, and I hope that we did make them better. And I just encourage everyone in the community to give some of their own time and expertise to make the city better, because that's how it happens, and it doesn't happen by itself. So I appreciate the honor, and I hope to see even more palm trees.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And it wouldn't be complete without a photo.
Okay, go her first.
All right, me first.
That's all she's got. Okay, and now over here.
Fantastic. So we have two items on our public hearing and starting going from proclamation to the commercial linkage fees. I know it's going to be as exciting, because Alexis is here. I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor Kate, and good evening. I'm Alexis Keptanian, Housing Analyst in the Community Development Department. And tonight I am presenting an informational report on a recently completed NEXUS study for commercial linkage fees. The City of San Rafael collaborated with the County of Marin and five other jurisdictions in Marin on a regional analysis of commercial linkage fees. A commercial linkage fee charges new commercial development for its role in creating new demand for affordable housing. So when commercial, commercial development creates new employment, there is an accompanying need for affordable housing for the new workforce, whose wages are often insufficient to afford market rate housing in Marin. San Rafael has had a commercial linkage fee in effect since 2005, and the current fee is based on a study from 2003, which defines the linkage fee as a percentage of the inclusionary in lieu fee. Other Marin jurisdictions that participated in the recent study either did not have a commercial linkage fee in place or had also adopted a fee in the early 2000s and were in need of an updated analysis. The county hired Strategic Economics and Bernaza Wolf Associates to conduct a commercial linkage fee NEXUS study. A NEXUS study determines the justifiable fee that can be charged on commercial development based on the need for and the cost of affordable housing that the new commercial development projects create. And the fees generated are then used to increase and expand the supply of affordable housing. The study was designed to provide participating jurisdictions with the information needed to potentially update or establish fees for new commercial development. And city staff are providing this update to the council about the NEXUS study to seek your input and the community's input prior to bringing forward a recommendation regarding potential changes to commercial linkage fees. The study analyzed the three most common commercial uses in Marin County, including office, research and development, retail, restaurant and services, and hotel. And the study takes into account best practices, local market patterns, financial feasibility, stakeholder feedback, and legal requirements, including compliance with Assembly Bill 602, recent state law regarding NEXUS study for impact fees. So the study recommends updating the commercial linkage fee methodology to assign a dollar amount per square foot, depending on the type of use. And as mentioned, San Rafael's existing fee methodology is not expressed as a dollar amount per square foot. And so to facilitate that comparison of existing fees, the consultants applied their methodology to the City of San Rafael's current fees, which you can see here. This produced the dollar amount per square foot listed here in blue for each commercial And this larger table summarizes the commercial linkage fees of San Rafael and other participating jurisdictions at the time of the study. All of them are expressed as a dollar amount per square foot for comparison. And in the last column, the table also shows the unified fee proposal that the county and other jurisdictions are considering. The proposal proposes to increase the fee for hotels based on the study results, which suggests that Marin jurisdictions' existing fees for hotels are a little bit low. And then the proposed fee for office and R and D is slightly less than San Rafael's current fee, 32 cents less. The market for office is stronger in San Rafael than in other Marin jurisdictions. And so the proposal of $10 per square foot is the point of overlap between the consultant's recommendation for San Rafael, which was $10 to $15 per square foot, and the recommendation for all of the other Marin jurisdictions that participated, which were, was between $5 to $10 per square foot. For retail, restaurant, and services, the proposal would maintain a similar fee per square foot for developments that are under 2,500 square feet, increasing from $7.74 to $8, and would raise the fee per square foot for retail, restaurant, and service developments over 2,500 square feet by an additional $2 per square foot to $10. Currently, retail, restaurant, and services under 5,000 square feet are exempt from the commercial linkage fee. And so if the city were to adopt the unified fee proposal without that exemption, this would be a new cost to new developments under 5,000 square feet of either $8 or $10 per square foot, depending on the number of square feet. So and note that overall, the unified fee proposal does not include San Rafael's current fee exemption for any project involving new construction under 5,000 square feet. And so the city would need to consider whether to preserve or modify this exemption. The project included stakeholder engagement. The consultants met with market rate developers, affordable housing developers, and commercial developers to gather their input on the studies and fee structures. And the developers indicated that the varied fee policies across jurisdictions can make it more difficult to estimate project costs and suggested that a common or at least similar policy across jurisdictions would be helpful and would support development. Staff intends to conduct additional outreach prior to bringing recommendations to your city council regarding updates to the commercial linkage fee methodology and/or the fees themselves. So the city can accept the informational, the city council can accept the informational report, direct staff to provide additional information or take no action. That concludes my presentation. And joining me virtually for Q and A is Jake Cummings, who is one of our consultants for this project. And we, I'm also joined by Community Development Director Ally Judas C., and we are happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that great report and good staff report as well in our packet. And I'll invite my colleagues for questions. Vice Mayor, questions?
Yeah, thank you so much. It's very easy to read. So my question is, you mentioned that there was like an exception under 5,000 square footage. Is that for all buildings or for specific ones?
That is for all of the commercial uses under consideration. So office, R and D, retail, restaurant, hotel, and hotel.
Got it. So right now, there is a unified fee proposal that even if it's under 2,500 square feet, they still have like $8 per square foot, so.
That is correct. And so the council has, of course, the option to, that's sort of the unified fee proposal, but there's also, we've had discussions with the consultant about targeted variation for different cities, depending on what works well for the, for any city in particular.
Okay. So are we approving the exception? Do we want to keep it? Or what is your recommendation based on the meetings you had with, you know, our community?
So I think we're going to do some additional stakeholder outreach. And so I think that we're, tonight, we are just presenting this as an informational report, and after we gather some additional feedback, we will bring forward a recommendation.
That's correct. I just wanted to add that the purpose of tonight is really to receive input from the public and from your city council. If there's anything that your city council is interested in having us pursue in terms of, you know, where there's variation that's more specific to San Rafael, we can do that. And as we move forward with a recommendation at a future date, we'll have that, that, that feedback built into the upcoming recommendation. The other thing that we'll be doing after this meeting is, our consultant has done some outreach, but we're going to be doing our own outreach as well. We've already been discussing with the Chamber of Commerce, but we'll be discussing with our local developers as well, just to kind of have them weigh in, give us their own, as we always do, give us their own personal perspective. And when we come back with a recommendation, we'll have that to provide to you.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you. I'll look this way. Councilmember Kurtz.
Yes, thank you for the report. I think I'm trying to understand if the goal is to get to a unified across the county or to update San Rafael.
So those are both, I would say, can both be objectives of the study. I think it's both that we, the last study for this particular fee was done in 2003. And so there are, there is a need to look at the underlying methodology and analysis and make sure that our fees are up to date. And at the same time, we saw this as an opportunity to potentially consider if, if we wanted to increase our alignment with some of the other jurisdictions who are also doing that analysis at the same time.
And do you have a feel at this point if the other jurisdictions are wanting to move to the unified method, including the ones who have no current policy?
So there are, there is at least one jurisdiction that has already adopted. I believe that's San and Selmo. And then a number of jurisdictions will be bringing this forward in the next month to two months. And so I think there is certainly interest in alignment with this fee proposal. I think that, I would imagine that other jurisdictions are also considering, like San Rafael's considering, what what, what fits for our particular jurisdiction.
So we may not get to a unified necessarily. It's not required to be a unified across the county. So each jurisdictions could still adjust it to their needs.
That's correct.
Okay. And then the fees that are raised, do they go to specifically into an affordable housing, like into our NOFA or into a different?
Thank you for that question. I should have said they go directly into our Affordable Housing Trust Fund, and they are used specifically for the creation of affordable housing.
Great. Thank you.
Councilmember Hill?
Yes, thank you Alexis for the staff report and the presentation tonight. You had mentioned that developers, the different, three different personas that you mentioned indicated that it is more difficult when the fee structures are different. Can you elaborate a little bit more why it's difficult? I'm going to play devil's advocate for a second because I can look up on a table and say, oh, well, it's this much per square foot. Is it, why is it that much, why is it difficult for them?
And I'm going to pause and see, Jake, since you were in those forums, if you want to share a little bit more about what was shared by the developers.
Good evening. Can you, can you hear me?
We can.
Yes.
Okay, good evening. Yes, thank you Alexis. So one thing I want to point out with the developer forums is that we spoke with the, this is part of a larger project that includes inclusionary housing policies for market rate development. So the commercial linkage fee study is one component of that. So when we met with developers, we were kind of discussing the broad suite of different policies that were imposed on different developers. And I think that the points about complexity were mostly about the inclusionary, the inclusionary housing policies across the different jurisdictions, which are more complicated and can be very confusing. I would agree with the assertion that it's not too difficult to have different fee levels in different jurisdictions. And I think, I think the purpose of the unified fee program was just to, and I don't want to speak out of turn or anything, but just to come up with a starting point against which the jurisdictions could tailor their fees in a way that makes sense to the specific locality.
Thank you. That's helpful. And I agree, the inclusionary calculations are quite, I'll just characterize them as weird because we've looked at it several times. So thank you for clarifying and differentiating between inclusionary construct and the rate table, because this is pretty much a straight calculation. So thank you for that. There is a note that the study was based on data collected in December twenty nineteen, which is just before the pandemic. So my question is, since the reports is based on data collected in December twenty nineteen, can staff elaborate on the likelihood that the analysis is still valid and would that change anything as we've advanced through, you know, say, four, almost four years since then, three and a half years?
Did you want me to answer that one?
Go ahead, Jake. Thanks.
Yes, you know, it, it, it's not terribly unusual for a fee to be adopted a couple or several years after the analysis performed. That's just the way things work a lot of times. You're absolutely right to observe that a lot of things have changed in our economy in the last several years. But, you know, the purpose of the study is to establish that connection between housing affordability and wages. And, you know, that relationship generally tends to hold true over, you know, a number of years. You know, in the intervening years, there may have been a little bit of change. You know, perhaps, you know, wage, costs have increased in the inflationary environment faster than wages or vice versa. But I, I, I think, you know, that the study is general enough to just demonstrate this relationship. And as long as there is this general relationship between costs, development costs and, and wages, it should, it should continue to hold true. I, I, I want to point out that the fees that are being proposed as a result of the study are, you know, a pretty small fraction of the, the maximum justified fees that come out of the analysis. So, you know, legally, you know, we have to show that relationship. But if we were to go back and run the numbers of twenty twenty-three data, we'd get a little bit of a different answer, but it wouldn't impact the, the actual fees that are being proposed here today.
And thank you. And, and building on your answer, what would you say is a, a best practice as far as how frequently we would revisit reassessing the baseline? It sounded like you said a couple of years. Is that, am I extrapolating that correctly that we might assess again in a couple of years?
No, I, I don't think necessarily a couple of years. I, I'm not, I'm not entirely sure. You know, it, it ranges a lot, obviously. So you have, you have a fee program in, in place since, I think, I think Alexis said two thousand and three. It sounds about right. So it's been twenty years. Lots, a lot has changed in twenty years. I, I'm, I'm not sure I can tell you a specific timeframe. But I don't think it's unusual to have a fee program in place for ten years. I think that there are some other cities that rely a lot on their linkage fees, such as like San Francisco, they might do it more frequently than that. I, I, I don't know the exact timeframe, but maybe they might have done it in less than ten years, five or seven years. But I don't think there's a hard and fast rule.
I, I just want to add that I, I'm inviting our consultant attorney to speak to that as I believe new legislation in the last year has now established some sort of a frequency of how, you know, how often we review our, our fee schedule. Megan, is that, can you speak to that?
Yes, that's correct. Generally, the best practice is to update impact fees every five years. Under new legislation, AB six oh two, you're now required to update fees every eight years. I, I agree that the fact that the data is a little bit, is a few years old, is not a problem in terms of adopting the fees at this time. But given that, you might want to, you know, do it in five to six years rather than the outside eight years.
Great. Thank you. Two more questions. Can we reference any other jurisdictions or collections of jurisdictions that are doing what we're looking at right now, which is take a study and then try to examine how neighboring jurisdictions would adopt a similar framework? I know, I know there's variability in what it could be. We could be the same or we could have variation, but are there any other Bay Area communities that are doing this?
Councilmember there, our firm, as well as, our consultant team has done a very similar study in San Mateo County. I don't know exactly how many jurisdictions were involved, but it was, it was a similar structure to this. Unincorporated County was a participant, Redwood City was a participant. There was at least five or six different jurisdictions that together did a coordinated commercial linkage fee with, study with us. Now, they may have gone a little bit on their different paths since then, but that is, you know, that is one, one reference that you could, that you could look to.
And Councilmember Hill, we're happy to, before bringing recommendations, look further into what San Mateo County did and, and sort of their outcomes since then.
That'd be great. Yeah, just, just even if it's one data point, just to see how that went for them. And then, actually, I'll hold, I don't have any questions. I have comments for later. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
My questions focus on, on the exemptions. As I look at these numbers, it, it appears that there has been, they changed into the new amounts are rather minimal, with the exception of hotels, which looks like that's doubled. So it's the removal of the exemptions that seems to be the biggest change. And I know you talked about your outreach on the plan. What is the approach? What are you thinking about the analysis that you will be undertaking? And the principles that you will be using to evaluate whether you will be proposing these exemptions or possibly some other exemptions in the, in the final amounts that you bring forward?
Feel free to jump in if you need to. I, I think one of the things that we want to do as we do the outreach is, you know, we are always looking for ways to support small businesses. You know, when we did the inclusionary housing ordinance, there were certain number of units that we exempt from requiring because it just doesn't pencil out. One of the things that that's valuable to development is being able to take advantage of the density bonus, but only units of five or more can take advantage of density bonus. So it seemed to make sense for us to, in prior ordinances, to exclude units of five or less. Similarly, when we're looking at supporting small businesses, businesses that are created in our community and will be supported within our community and support our community, we kind of want to be able to find ways to, to encourage those, those new businesses to develop. So as we do the outreach, we'll be kind of exploring like what this kind of a change would mean to these small businesses.
And, and I'll be looking for a very targeted analysis that perhaps would have some input from Economic Development Director saying that this is where we could make a difference in, in our, in our business community. I mean, everyone wants fees to be less. So we want, we want to see where, where we can deploy our fee-making authority in a way that brings a specific identifiable benefit to the community.
Thank you. Any other questions? No? Okay, I just had two. So are there any unintended consequences of moving from the percentage, the way that we've always done stuff? Like, I don't feel compelled necessarily to have to do what other locations or jurisdictions are doing. And maybe you just did that for the report, but moving from the percentage to the dollar signs, is there any just that unintended consequences from the way we've always done it?
So, so I will start and then I will invite Jake, if you have any, or anyone who has any additional input. But I would say I'm not aware of unintended consequences. I think one of the benefits is that it's a much more straightforward way to state our fee. My understanding also, and I'll look to Megan, but my understanding is that the AB six oh two, there's a provision that just actually discourages jurisdictions from you expressing their fee in any other way other than dollar amount per floor area.
Okay. Megan, did you want to comment on that? Because that's, that's a great point.
Yeah, I believe that that provision in AB six oh two specifically applies to residential development. But it is, in general, commercial linkage fees are usually done on a per-square-foot basis. The way that the city of San Rafael does it is somewhat unusual. It's, I've done probably, you know, over a dozen of these, and I haven't seen it done that way before. So it certainly would benefit from the uniformity. And I think it is what developers are used to seeing, and, you know, that's what the industry is used to doing it that way.
Okay, that's really helpful. So another question is following up on what Councilmember Kurtz had asked is about the importance of having a unified fee across the cities. Our guess was Councilmember Hill was trying to see if there's a benefit. Because I would love for you to speak to, in fact, I noticed that Nevada's not on here. And I noticed these cities are different commercially, and they're different in terms of their affordable housing. So I, I guess I'm trying to understand how much we want to lean into what other jurisdictions are doing if it's apples and oranges. So could you speak to that? Because that's what feels right now. So I could be missing something.
Yeah, I mean, we, that is something we've talked about. And earlier in Alexis's presentation, she mentioned the idea of having kind of a focused, kind of a unique inspection of our own, how it would impact us and bringing back something that's more focused and specific to San Rafael. There are other jurisdictions that are doing this as well. Some don't have a commercial linkage fee currently. And so, you know, the, the idea was to try to kind of bring alignment across different cities. But as, you know, to your point, we've had two hotel developments in the past couple of years, either developed or proposed. So, you know, part of the analysis for us is really kind of thinking about what that impact could be in the future for us versus other cities that may not have that type of an application.
Yeah. And I think we have an Affordable Housing Trust Fund, but the other cities, I don't think have that. Anyway, so I, I will, I don't want to delve into the comments, but I was trying to understand like that, just how relevant it is what Corta Madera is doing. So that's what, but we will turn to the public to get their input, and maybe they'll have some insight on this item. So with that, I will open up public comment in the chambers first. Yes, Mr. Terry.
Halviteri Gersl Park. When you started your presentation, I had a look up nexus. I wasn't quite sure what that was. And according to the internet, nexus is a legal term that limits the state's ability to tax an out-of-state entity or person. I don't know if that's what you were talking about, question one. Second question, are these fees related to expenses the city may need to invest in to enable them to handle increased number of traffic persons, et cetera? Bigger sewer, wider roads, more police, et cetera? Is that what that fee is for in addition to the small portion that seems to be dedicated to affordable housing? Were two of my questions. And somebody asked a question that really clarified why the presentation was being made. And that was very helpful. So I assume the next version will include that as well. Can't quite remember the question. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Terry. Anybody else in the chamber want to comment on this item? Yeah.
How much are we paying the consultants? Oh, yeah. Last time I accidentally approached or looked the wrong way. So learning every week. How much are we paying the consultants for this impact report? And why did it take, it sounds like four years?
Anybody else in the chambers? Not seen anyone? Anyone online like to comment on this item?
I see no hands raised, but I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I will close the public comments. We have three questions that we heard. There might be additional questions from the council, but one is if you could define the word nexus and how that manifests in this conversation. Two, are the fees, can they be related to infrastructure improvement? So probably clarity around what the fees can be used. And then the amount of the consultant contract. And why did it take time from when the contract started to getting this report?
So the nexus we're referring to is a little bit different than what you, what you looked up online. We're referring to the relationship between the employment that's created by commercial development and then the accompanying need for affordable housing for new workers' households. So that's the nexus that we're looking at in this case and what the study is, is analyzing. And then the second question around, is this used for any infrastructure? No, it is not. There are separate fees, like we have a street maintenance fee. There's other development impact fees that take that into account. This particular fee is specifically used for affordable housing. And then the final question, so San Rafael contributed, I believe it was thirty-one thousand dollars to this joint study. And there were some significant cost savings for all of the jurisdictions to combine efforts and do this study together. I'm going to let Director Judasey speak to why it took so long.
So we entered into an agreement with the county, other jurisdictions did as well, to obtain money from the state. And then COVID happened. And we redirected a lot of our resources to COVID response. While the consultants continued to do work, their ability to coordinate with us was reduced because all of our times were being spent doing other stuff. So that's the simple answer.
Thank you. Thank you for that. So I'll bring it back to my colleagues for either additional questions or comments. So I'll bring it back to my colleagues for either additional questions or comments. And I'll start with the Vice Mayor. So we're just providing input and direction.
Yes, no, thank you. I think, I mean, it's been like $2.5 million for the last almost, what, 18 years? So which is, is a, is a nice amount. I feel that the fees except for the hotel are not that different. But the biggest thing is going to be in the exception. And specifically for retail and restaurants and services as we are trying to be an attractive city for them to come and, you know, open their businesses here in San Rafael. I guess my question, and I'm, I'm very happy you mentioned the Chamber of Commerce, is it, is it going to make a difference? Because we definitely want to keep, you know, inviting all those businesses to come to San Rafael. So yeah, so that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you, Alexis, and all folks who jumped in to provide comment tonight. That was helpful as part of the company, the study. I am interested in making sure that we get a right sized outcome for San Rafael. I love our neighbors and I want to make sure that we're taking care of folks in our community. I also understand too that there's a radius of where people can live. I also know that our affordable housing trust fund has been very effective at getting affordable housing off the ground. I think we could name them. But the fact is, is that we want to make sure that we still have that flexibility between this and the in lieu fees to make a difference. So I'm very interested in the outcome. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz.
Yeah, thank you for looking at this. It's a, it's a big change, I think. But anytime we have something that hasn't been really looked at and revised or updated since 2005, it's probably a good idea to look at it. I just want to confirm, car dealerships, do those fall under retail?
Yes, they do.
Okay, so that's, yeah, because that's a large piece for San Rafael. And I, you know, Councilmember Hill's comments, I agree with that we need to, even though it's a unified, I think that's a helpful guideline, but I think we need to do for San Rafael, what's the right thing for San Rafael? So thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bushy.
I provided my comments in the questions section. I'll be looking at the, at the exemptions on rationale supporting in the exemptions. And I agree with the comments of my colleagues.
Thank you, and I'll just close out. Thank you for bringing this study forward and Jake and Megan for your help in it. I'm glad that we were able to go with the other jurisdictions because there was cost savings there in terms of the report moving forward. My big takeaway is we're so inherently different from these jurisdictions. Yes, we're all towns that are adjacent to each other. But really in terms of the commercial mix that we have, I mean, Director Judas just talked about the two hotels, but we could even go deeper on that. So that part, and then the affordable housing, we've really leaned into that. And so when I look at these amounts, if, and they look pretty similar, I think, to what we were doing, but I want us to be recognizing that we actually have been using our affordable housing trust fund to build housing in San Rafael. And some of our peer agencies or cities, I don't think we could make that same determination. So just saying. So I really want to emphasize that this is an important tool for us and we wouldn't want to sell ourselves short. I really think having it reflect where we are. And I, I really appreciated what Jake said. I wrote it down word for word, it was so great. This is one component of a suite of policies. So we want it to be reflective of San Rafael. Our suite is different. We've worked really hard to have a suite of policies to enable the type of housing and development we want here. So I wouldn't want us to lose a thread in trying to do what our neighboring jurisdictions are doing. So I also agree with Councilmember Bushy in terms of the exemptions. There is a point of if it's not broken, let's keep it going, right? Because is it doing what we want it to do? Or is there an opportunity here? And that's what I think we really want to hear from the staff. Is there an opportunity to monetize it or not? And what are the trade offs around that? So, so thank you for the report. Is there any other questions or feel like you got a lot of information from us? Okay, okay. So with that, I would, yeah, I would request a motion on this item.
I'll move to accept report on regional nexus study of commercial linkage fees.
Thank you, is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded. As I say, Claire will sort that one out, roll call please.
Councilmember Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Edens Glotti.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
And that motion carries five zero. The final item is the Canal Street, thank you Alexis very much, thank you Director Judas. Is the Canal Street Underground Utility District. Welcome. And I think your mic is off when you're ready.
Evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm Joanna, a civil, senior civil engineer with our Public Works Department. And for tonight's consideration, we have the Canal Street Underground Utility District. In this meeting, we'll be presenting on the proposed Underground Utility District on Canal Street between Medway Road and Spinner Kerr Point Drive. We'll also have opportunities for public comment and questions and then turn back to City Council for action and direction. I'd like to start off with some background on the Rule 20A program. It was mainly created to improve aesthetics and to remove blight by eliminating a concentration of overhead utility lines. And as part of this program, PG&E had allocated work credits to the city, which then we could apply to undergrounding projects within San Rafael. In 2019, PG&E notified San Rafael that cities and communities who had not been actively participating in the Rule 20A for the past eight years could have their funding potentially reallocated to a different city. So in response to that, the city established the Freitas Parkway Underground Utility District to really demonstrate our commitment to this program and to prevent reallocation of these Rule 20A funds. When we did that, we understood that there was only enough work credits to underground maybe about 25% of Freitas Parkway. And as of last year, PG&E had stopped allocating new work credits for any of the cities. So that means we wouldn't be able to accumulate enough credits to underground all of Freitas Parkway. So since then, city staff have been working with PG&E collaboratively to search for a more impactful and equitable location for an undergrounding project and district. And we've done some site visits and have identified Canal Street as a really ideal location since it really impacts and benefits a historically underserved community. And in addition to that, it also meets three out of the four criteria for a potential project. And we really only had to meet one of them, but we met three. So that's great. And that includes eliminating overhead lines. And then Canal Street's also in a very dense and extensively used area. It also passes our, by our Albert J. Borro Community Center and Tuscany and Marsh where we've got a nice trail and path for residents and visitors to walk and enjoy the scenery. So here's a photo of Canal Street currently in front of Albert J. Borro with overhead lines. And as part of the underground district and the project, we will underground all the utilities overhead, including electrical from PG&E and other telecommunications lines such as Comcast and AT&amp;T. We've got a couple more photos here. As you can see, there's a lot of utility poles and overhead lines that are really obstructing views from residential units and really impacting the quality of life. Here are some additional photos. We've got really large utility poles that really take, take up a lot of room for sidewalks and narrows the pathway for pedestrians, people trying to walk through with like carts or strollers. It's very challenging. And these utility poles also currently hold our streetlights on Canal Street. So in conjunction with this project, we'll also be looking to relocate these streetlights with standalone poles. And when we do that, as part of the effort, we'll also look at widening the sidewalks so that we can provide a more enhanced facility for pedestrians. Here's an overview map of the Underground Utility District. We've highlighted Canal Street where the utilities will be undergrounded between Medway Road and Spinner Kerr Point Drive. That also includes undergrounding some of the poles along the side streets. As our next steps, we'll be coordinating with PG&E for the prioritization and design of the project. We've been talking with our liaison at PG&E and they let us know that the CPUC came out of a new decision to phase out the Rule 20A program by 2033. And as part of that decision, they've included guidelines to prioritize projects in underserved communities. So we're hoping with this guidance, we can work with PG&E to really elevate our project to a higher priority and move our position up in their queue of projects. And in addition to that, we also have the Canal Active Transportation Experience Project, which we recently have been approved for the ATP grant funding. This project includes improvements for pedestrians, bicyclists, and transit. But more related to our project is the street lighting improvements, which we will have funding for construction in fiscal year 26, 27. So with this additional funding, we're hoping this will motivate PG&E to work together with us to elevate our project. So staff, staff's recommendation is to adopt a real solution to form an Underground Utility District on Canal Street between Medway and Spinner Kerr Point Drive and also to prioritize the Rule 20A funds for the Canal Undergrounding Project. This concludes our presentation and I'm joined here with Director Miller and would be happy to take comments and questions.
Thank you, thank you Joanna, great presentation. Vice Mayor, questions?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Thank you so much for the presentation. This is so exciting. I have to say that I didn't grow up here. And I was, one of the first thing that I was always surprised is was to see so many lines going all over the place. So, and especially in a place like Canal Street with so many apartments, I think it's, it's really, really exciting. I guess my question, and you touched, you touched on it around the streetlight coordination. So since this is going to be built during 2026, 27, I know there is like an effort right now for PG&E to install, like I think they just installed like 41 new lights in the canal. How is it going to work around the timeline just to make sure that once we put the lights, we don't take them out and, you know?
Right, right. So as part of the Canal Active Transportation Experience Project, we'll be identifying locations. We'll also be working with PG&E because they'll be supplying the power for these lights. So we'll want to coordinate with the design of the undergrounding project too, just to make sure there's no conflict between the two project improvements. And, you know, ideally, we will want to move up the undergrounding so that there's no duplication of work either.
Great.
Yeah, I just want to add to that, Director Miller. So yeah, what Joanna said is correct. And also, it's very fortunate we have this funding because the Rule 20A funding does not cover streetlights typically. So if we do a street lighting plan that shows the streetlights that conflict with some of the utility poles, PG&E will have to make the decision whether or not they're going to relocate their poles that they're soon, soon going to have to underground? Or if they're going to accelerate the undergrounding project? So that's going to be one of the first steps in our design because we're going to kick off the design for the Canal Experience, Transportation Experience Project this fiscal year. And so we'll be able to do that analysis and show PG&E. And, you know, hopefully that'll help, you know, expedite our project.
Great. And I guess my other one was, we were very lucky to have bosses del canal, members of the canal alliance, Dominican to do the, the project lighting in addition to the city of San Rafael. So I guess it would be just to make sure that we get their input once we have the design to make sure that those lights work where they wanted to work. And of course, that they are not facing the buildings, you know, and things like that. So I assume that will be part of the plan?
Yes, definitely.
Okay, great. And then how long do you project that is going to take to build this? Because this could be a big construction area, especially in a place where it's so hard to park, you know?
Right. I think one of the challenging things and what we want to work with PG on is really the timing of the project. Because we'll want to get into their queue as soon as possible. And the design portion does take significant amount of time. I think maybe our third street project might be a good example for how long it takes underground.
I hope not.
Yes, sorry.
I think it's going to be significantly less time. It is, what we're talking about, it's going to be a joint trench. So likely going to be two or three feet wide, depending on what's underground there. Hopefully, they can place it in a location where we don't have to close travel lanes or maybe we just, I know, we don't want to close parking, but you know, hopefully it can just help with construction if it's out of the way more. So we'll have to work with PG&E on the location. But I was guessing more like six months, but we probably should need to confirm with them. The biggest hang up for these Rule 20A projects, based on my experience, is that you can have everything underground, but you have to wait for the last utility company to take their stuff off of the lines. And in some cases, I've worked on projects where it took a year and a half for one of the telecom companies to finally get their lines off of, even though they have active lines in the ground, we have to wait for them to remove them off the pole. So that's usually the biggest hang up. So we just need to continue to push and try to make sure that doesn't, something like that doesn't happen.
Yeah, that's great, thank you. And I guess my last one is, would it be room to add some beautiful trees in the community?
I think we can definitely take that into consideration.
Okay, great. This is very exciting, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bushy.
I've got a super specific legal question, actually. Why are we making a Underground Utility District? What is the legal significance of that?
Yes.
The significance of a district is it's a means to do it with Rule 20 funds that are available to make it happen. Otherwise, we wouldn't be able to do it. There's other jurisdictions that have done this a lot. Elvedere's undergrounded almost their whole city, making these undergrounding districts. And we haven't done it as much, but hopefully we'll be doing more and more.
So it's just the city saying that there will be underground in this area? All utilities must be undergrounded?
The, the city decides to impose the district. And in terms of funding it, in this case, I missed the, my attention was directed away from the funding discussion.
Yeah, so it's a requirement by PG&E for us to have a resolution that designates this undergrounding district before we're allowed to spend the Rule 20A funds for the project.
Okay, so it's just a designation? We're not creating a new entity?
No.
Right, I think, and now I'm tracking the council member's concern. It's not like some of the other districts with which you're familiar where we have an ongoing obligation and we're continuing to bill and that sort of thing. Once it's, it's done, it should be done and then maintained by PG&E. Not something that we're going to have continuing involved with or be billing like some of the other, you know, like Lagoon districts and things like that you're familiar with.
Okay, so it's just a designation of an area that is necessary to capture these wonderful funds. Very good, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Kurtz.
Very exciting project, thank you. How was this street selected across the canal? Because I was wondering if, and if the other streets have been prioritized for undergrounding? That was one question.
I can start the answer and pass it over to Director Miller. For Canal, I think we selected this because it had a large impact. And there's a lot of traffic that passes by there. It's used by a lot of pedestrians, vehicles just going through there. So it has a really large impact. It meets one of the criteria set forth by PG&E to spend the funds. Additionally, as you can see from photos, there's a lot of residential units that are really heavily impacted by these lines. And there's just a lot more of these poles on Canal compared to some of the side streets.
Yeah, and the other, one of the other major streets in the area is Kern Boulevard. And the majority of Kern Boulevard is already underground, just the last couple poles are not. We tried to get those in the undergrounding district, but there's some weird things that happened with the poles going on easements behind homes. And we couldn't, we couldn't add that in. We tried to work with PG&E. So this is just the other big street that we could check multiple boxes on.
And I don't remember the actual term that was used, but a few months ago, there were some, there was a fire from the wires. That was during the storms, I think. Is that in this area or is that a different area? Are they related at all? Do you remember?
It was a transformer.
It was a transformer?
Yeah, so this, this does go to 400 Canal, because that's the corner of Medway and Canal Boulevard. But there's also, I'm not sure if it was on this side of 400 Canal or if it was on the other side of 400 Canal. Because if you go, continue down Canal Street, the overhead picks back up. But that's more of an industrial area, so it's harder for us to create undergrounding district over there because the residence is one of the reasons why we can do it where we're doing it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you, Joanna, for bringing this to us. I have, I have a couple of questions in there. We, in April, received, or it was part of our consent calendar, but we had feasibility. received, or it was part of our consent calendar, but we had feasibility funding to examine broadband. Is there any interdependency with potential broadband deployment, especially if it's fiber? You know, is there a potential that we would delay one or the other to make sure that the fiber could be concurrently placed underground at the same time, if that is something where we go?
Well, we can always add empty conduits that the city owns within this trench, or if one of the other broadband companies that's not currently overhead could also add one in. And sometimes even PG&E will add a couple spare electrical conduits in the ground, just in case they think they need to make upgrades. For instance, we received public comment on EV chargers and just the increase in power needed in the, potentially in the neighborhood. So they could do empty conduits in the trench, or the city could pay for their portion to do an empty conduit that could have fiber in it someday.
Okay. I would just imagine that that would be part of our feasibility is to make sure that we're timing it so that we're solving that interdependency. And related, also, if we have a vision for making our Canal neighborhood more verdant, would we potentially delay tree planting along Canal to make sure that we could plant trees that could grow into the power lines more? You know, I don't know how much they would grow in the next couple of years, but would there be any consideration for street trees along Canal and the timing of those plantings?
Yeah, so since we have not planned the trees on Canal Street yet, we can take that into account. But, yeah, we understand, we saw the maps that one of the members from the public did in the Canal of all of the street trees. And, yeah, we've looked at it and have identified as, you know, Canal Street and some of the adjacent streets would be great locations for trees. So, yes, it would make sense to potentially not do those yet. We also want to figure out the alignment of this trench because that's going to be a huge factor because there's all sorts of setbacks to different utilities where it can actually be. So knowing where that is, and in some cases, you'll see blocks in San Rafael that don't have street trees, and part of the reason is because that is where the joint trench is located. So that will all play into the decision.
Yes, thank you. And it made me think, because I've grown up in California, and PG&E has a lot of pole infrastructure, so I'm not used to that. We dial 511 if we're going to dig because of gas, but would we also dial 511 for digging anywhere where there's, I guess we would accommodate both electrical and gas, right?
Yeah, correct. So, yeah, 511 would identify where the joint trench is located, which would have electrical, telecom. Some of these have gas in it. I'm not sure what the PG&E's gas infrastructure is like on Canal Street, so that's something that they can consider whether or not they want to also, they need to replace their gas line, they could also add it in there. But it'll all be identified with 511.
Got it. Two more questions, actually three. So service laterals, I was reading in the report that if it's going, basically if it's going to exceed 100 feet on the run, then we would have to pay for it. Obviously, it's going to be part of the study. In my mind, I'm trying to imagine runs going 100 feet from a trench in the street. It doesn't seem like there would be that many, but maybe I'd be surprised. Does it feel like that's a pretty low probability we're going to exceed 100 feet on the service laterals?
Right. So most of the laterals we've checked, we've done like a really quick high-level check, they're all under 100 feet. There might be like one or two kind of further in the side streets that might exceed that. But in our conversations with PG&E, they usually average out all the laterals, so we wouldn't have anything that's over 100 in terms of the service lateral.
Okay. And then it also said in here about if we exceed 1,500 on a panel, I don't even know what a panel costs. Is that a pretty reasonable amount? Or are we going to have inflation go so high, all of them are going to be over 1,500?
Right. So I would, I think in conversations with PG&E, it's pretty low in terms of cost for panel conversions. But if we contract with PG&E for the construction management and for them to help oversee the work, then we can also use Rule 28 funds to capture anything in excess of the 1,500.
Great. And then my final question, and you mentioned it already, April, which is there were questions to make certain that the capacity could support electric vehicle infrastructure. I would also want us to make sure that it could support potential solar infrastructure. And the reason why I'm requesting that is that I have, I will call it layperson awareness, that there is a limit in current infrastructure that we can't put, there's only so much photovoltaic that we can put in just in terms of managing the supply and demand as people are pushing, say, more electricity onto the grid. There's basically a cap or a finite amount. Is there a way that we could ensure that there's potential for, I would say, more photovoltaic as well as the EV infrastructure?
Yeah, so as part of the PG&E's planning and estimating phase, they will look at opportunities for betterment of their own systems and also for future needs. So during those conversations, city would have already been engaged as part of the process, and we can share with them to make sure they look into the capacity and load requirements for solar and EV charging.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I just have one quick question. So do we need to expend these dollars by a certain date?
Correct. So with the new decision from CPUC, we have until 2033.
Okay. Well, we'll make that no problem. Just making sure. Okay, thank you. We'll see if there's additional questions or comments from the public. So I'll open the public comment on this item. If you'd like to address the council, yeah, so come on down. If you want to, state your name. You're not required to, and what part of San Rafael you're in. And thank you for making the time.
Allyn Moody, Bayview Street, Gerstel Park. I'm, we're curious as to what is the source of the funding?
So what we'll do is we'll collect all the questions and then we'll turn to staff.
Funding is available for this?
Okay. So if you have, yeah, so if you have other questions, then we will stack them all up and staff will answer, so keep going.
And are these funds available to any, any area that becomes a district?
Okay.
I think that's it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Great questions. Anybody else in the chambers like to address council on this item? Yeah, welcome.
Calviteri, Gerstel Park. Whenever I listen to a presentation, I ask myself, why is this important? And what information am I getting given that helps me make a decision on whether or not it is something worth doing? Those, these are the two questions. So I'm listening, not to say you haven't answered those, but as I listen to this, I'm asking, are those, is the existing infrastructure in need of repair? Is that why this is being done? Or is money available? Whenever we get money, it's important to spend it because we're not going to get it again. So let's make the city better in the ways we can with the funds available to us. Some of the questions I had. I also noticed that that's, particularly, I used to live over there, and that area floods a lot. So I didn't know flooding is a concern for underground utilities, or whether or not the industry has gotten to the point where that's not an issue anymore. So that's a question I had. And then finally, if many items are underground, would that result in the street being torn up repeatedly to get to whatever services are being provided by that underground facility?
Thank you. Anyone else in the chambers? Yeah, come on down.
Sam Ferguson at Fort Port, if you know, I actually live on Canal. Been there for about 20 years. Wonderful community. I think this is a great idea. I think it's a quality of life issue. These poles are just disgusting. But I think it's a great idea. I know all the neighbors I talk to are really excited about it. So I figured I'd come down and make a comment. And I would encourage whatever they need to do, and the community will get behind it because they're really excited to do this. All right, so I figured I'd say that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Sam. Thanks for coming down. Anybody else? Not seen anyone else in the chambers? Anyone online like to comment on this item?
I do see one hand raised.
Okay.
Yeah, this is Johnson Reynolds. I'm still in Maui, but I have a condo on Larkspur. And I am concerned about how this is affecting the people and the transition of this. It's a great idea. I know that the CEO of PG&E is, in her advertisements, talking about doing underground work for electricity, including broadband and electrical vehicles and all that kind of stuff. But have we talked sufficiently? I think Galati talked about, you know, the Canal Community Alliance and the Voices Day Canal and the Moheris Day Canal. They've had input into this, and how do they feel about this? It's a long-term project, but I would like to hear from the people in the canal. I think Galati was saying that she has talked to people in the canal and seen the positivity of this. And, you know, that, we need to be concerned about that, and then if we actually proceed with it, the transition time and how we, how we have, how we accomplish something for the people, you know, during the transition time, that will suffice people getting through this. So it's a positive thing, but it's caused transition time, and and we need to hear the word from not only Canal Community Alliance, but the Voices Day Canal and the Moheris Day Canal about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
I see no other hands raised, but I'll give everyone a moment. I see no public comment.
Thank you. I captured a couple of questions, and I know you went over some of this in the presentation, but I found that we have a lot of information, that we definitely have questions for further clarification. So one, source of the funding. Are the funds available to other districts? Why this street? Is flooding a concern? Future implications of a shared trench for future work? And then, community input of affected residents?
I'm trying to capture all of that.
I'm sorry, I can do that. I can. Don't worry, we'll get through them all. So the source of funding was the first.
So for a source of funding, it's based on payment to PG&E from like ratepayers, like so whenever, you know, we pay our bills to PG&E, they take a percentage of that, and they apply it based on certain ratio to each of the cities. So that's how the work credits are allotted every year up till last year, 2022. And are these available to any district? So they are available to districts that have been established through our resolution, and they would also need to meet the Rule 28 criteria. So we've met three out of the four. And I think the next one.
Maybe the answer is why this street. Maybe you could just, if you just restate the criteria, you don't have to show the slide again, but just restate the three out of the four that this street meets.
Yeah, so this street, it's very dense with utility lines and overheading, undergrounding the overhead lines is one of the criterias of a very congested area. And then also Canal is a very extensively used street. We've got a lot of pedestrians, vehicles, bicyclists, so that meets another one of the criterias. And the third one is that it really impacts area of public recreation. So we've got our AJ Boro Community Center, and we also have Discorian Marsh, where we have visitors like walking and enjoying the scenery, so that meets the third criteria for this.
I thought you'd mentioned that historically it's been maybe an underserved community. Is that something that PG?
Correct. So that's how, the new decision prioritizes projects that are underserved. Yeah.
Okay. We see flooding was another next question?
Right. That's a really great question that was actually discussed during our sidewalk. And that's something that PG&E's team will think about and design for when we get to the design phase of the project.
Okay. And the last one, our future implications of a shared trench. You have more people in there, so.
Yeah, and I think, so during our sidewalk, we also had reps from AT&amp;T, Comcast, and other utilities. So during the design phase, we'll also be in contact with all the different utility companies to make sure we capture everyone's kind of interest in being to that trench.
Thank you. And the last was that if you could just speak to the community input, and I think especially the residents that are adjacent to Canal Street, they'll be impacted.
I can share a little bit, and maybe Director Miller can add on. I know that on our city website and in several presentations for like East San Rafael, we've kind of talked about creating this undergrounding district or, you know, the thought of doing this project. So that's kind of the extent that I know so far, but I'm sure once we get further along in the project, we'll do more as well.
Yeah, the last thing she said was, what I was going to say is that, when the project, like this is just creating the undergrounding district. So we didn't really want to make any promises to the community that this is coming, even though I've been looking forward to this for three years, trying to do something in the canal and have our money go towards this or the money from PG&E. So now we're going to start the process of reaching out to them, especially now that we have the ATP funding for street lighting to look at, what do we want this corridor to look like? Because now that we have this added money for street lighting and for sidewalks and transit, we have multiple funding sources to actually do something bigger here than we could before. So we haven't done a ton of outreach yet, but we will be doing more and more outreach once we, hopefully, this gets adopted.
Yes, thank you. Fantastic. I think those were our questions. Thank you, Joanna. So I'll bring it back for any additional questions or comments. So Vice Mayor?
Yes, no, as I mentioned, this is so exciting, and I cannot wait. It's definitely going to impact the, it's going to be beautiful when it's done, but until it's done, it's going to be chaos for a while, for a long time. So I think it's definitely important to connect with the community and make sure that they are aware of that and everything else. Because I'm just thinking, not just the noise and everything that's going to happen, but then hopefully they will be able to coordinate and close it pretty quickly. But if it's not, it would probably impact parking, and that is a huge issue there as well. So, yeah, it's very exciting, and I look forward to hearing more about it, you know, when it comes. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Hill?
Yes, thank you, Joanna, and thank you, Director Miller, for walking us through this opportunity to spend PG&E funds that need to come to the city. I believe this is the right site, given all the criteria that we must follow. I think this will have a, hopefully, a huge positive impact. I agree that there are going to be tangential impacts to the community and other utilities. Any potential plans for greening and lighting? Obviously, we want to make sure we're able to get it all done, so I'm looking forward to a moment, hopefully in this decade, where we can have a really wonderful outcome, this included. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz?
Also very supportive. Thank you for the report. Happy to move this forward. And I just also say that I didn't hear anyone mention the county, and we know the county was involved with helping with some of the broadband work, and I think that there might be also an opportunity to check in with them again around supporting that.
Thank you. Councilmember Bushy?
I concur with the comments of my colleagues and support adopting the resolution.
Thank you. And I'll just say, excellent report, Joanna. Thank you, Director Miller. I love you. You had this three-year vision, and now all this funding is coming together because it is about the undergrounding, but it's also about the trees and the streetlights and all this coming together, which is really the heart of the community. It's fantastic. So it sounds like we have general consensus, but let's have a formal motion on this item, please. Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I'll make a motion to approve, let's see, the resolution to designate an underground utility district on Canal Street between Midway Road and Spinaque Point Drive.
Thank you. Second? Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Bushy?
Aye.
Councilmember Hill?
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Edens Galati?
Aye.
Mayor Kate?
Aye. That motion carries fine zero. Thank you, Joanna. Excellent work. We don't have any items on the San Rafael successor agency. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everyone.